Six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the February 16th, 2016 zoning board meeting to order. Can we please start with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to remind anyone who's got a cellphone on to please silence it or turn it off. Can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Here.
Mr. Grody?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Westfall? Mr. Taylor?
Here. Can I ask Mr. Lauf to please come up since Mr. Westfall is not with us this evening? And I think we have an oath of office for Mr. Grody to administer.
Aye. Allois H. Grody.
solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution. And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and resolutions of Colrain Township.
And the laws and resolutions of Colrain Township.
And that to the best of my ability.
And that to the best of my ability.
Will faithfully discharge the duties?
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a member of the zoning commission?
As a member of the zoning commission.
In and for Colrain Township?
In and for Colrain Township.
Hamilton County, state of Ohio, so help me God.
Hamilton County, state of Ohio, so help me God.
For professionalial concern, you can pass to be a member of the Colrain Zoning Commission, thank you for your service, appreciate it. Please sign your oath. Senator O'Neal.
Can everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes from the last meeting? Does anybody have any changes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minute as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain, I was not at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Grody. Next on the agenda is public address, of which we have none, so we'll move on to item number four, final development plan. This is Dick's Sporting Goods, 10180 Colrain Avenue, this is a minor modification to a final development plan. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, sir, we do. As mentioned, this is a minor amendment to the Colrain Town Center FDP to add wall signage to the exterior of the former Hobby Lobby space. This is actually to provide signage for the Dick's location, which will be moving from one space to another within the same strip center. The FDP was approved by the zoning commission in 1998, and until 2004, this particular space was occupied by Thriftway, until 2004, when it was transitioned to Hobby Lobby. Dick's Sporting Goods is currently located here next to the Walmart in the shopping center. If you're familiar with the shopping center, it's just north of 275 on Colrain Avenue. And Dick's is proposing to move to this location here. They're not just proposing, they're actually already under construction with their new front facade, so the minor modification in front of you this evening is strictly for signage. This is, I apologize for the quality of this picture, it's rather old, this is the original Thriftway in the location, maybe a little better picture. The Hobby Lobby before it was, before construction began on the Dick's facade. This is the existing Dick's location there. What you see there, that structure will be slightly larger on the new Dick's space, because the space for Dick's, that Dick's will occupy is actually going to be slightly larger as well, just to give you an idea of what that structure actually looks like, and will be very similar on the new location. It does come out from the building, kind of creates that entryway, and just for clarification purposes, this structure itself has already been approved. What we are looking at this evening is just the lettering of the signage, so give you, I think it's, it's pretty much standard Dick's signage, it's nothing new. The letters themselves, let me run through the sizing here to get an idea. The township zoning resolution would allow a maximum of 100 square feet, that's kind of the cap. The width of the Dick's space is actually 234 feet, so if we were going to stick to strictly the code itself, we would be capped at that 100 square foot allowed. The proposed sign is actually 282 square feet. Keep in mind that some of our zoning districts actually allow for a cap of 150 feet, so the 100 feet is actually the lower of our two caps. So Dick's Sporting Goods is requesting an additional, additional 182 square feet of signage. The code allows for a height maximum of four feet for the letters. The letters themselves are being requested for eight feet for the Dick's portion, and then the Sporting Goods below that are actually one foot, seven and a half inches additional to the eight feet above. This is comparable to the existing Dick's signage. They do have roughly eight-foot letters in that location. The proposed width of this sign is actually 28 feet, three and seven eighths inches. That said, because that this signage is comparable to what's existing, staff does recommend approval of this minor modification.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Please state your name for us, sir.
Yes, good evening, my name is Tom Gianni, I'm with Image One Industries in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania, and representing Dick's Sporting Goods and the landlord.
Thank you.
Yes, we agree 100% with what staff is saying. The letters that we're going to be putting on the building are the exact letters that are on the building right now, they're not changing in size from what we already have. Those letters have recently been refurbished, we are still going to take them down, completely refurbish them to like new condition, put LED lighting in there, which is much more energy efficient, and then yes, use those exact same letters that they have now on the new building. The new building is roughly 40% more in square footage than what they have, and the, the structure itself is, that is existing, is old technology. The new structure is all out of aluminum composite material with Kynar coatings, like a Teflon coating, that's self-cleaning, when it rains, the dirt washes off, and, and it's, the finish is good for like 10 years. So the, the larger, the larger store, the larger facade, we're going to be putting a canopy in there, and using the exact same set of letters that are there that they've enjoyed up to this point, we'd like to continue with them, and thank the board for your consideration.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have any questions?
Why, why do the letters need to be almost twice what they are for Hobby Lobby and for Thriftway?
I don't know that they, they are any different than what Hobby Lobby had, I don't know what, what square footage Hobby Lobby had, but the, the letters have been on the building and served the building well, and served Dick's Sporting Goods very well up to this point, for as long as they've been existing in the, in the center. And what we're asking to do is maintain that same identification in a building that's about 45% larger in size.
Okay, I was just thinking that if we allowed you to do that, others would come in with the same.
But we've, we've had that opportunity since the building has been there. We've had the eight-foot letters on that building for.
Maybe, maybe I quoted it wrong, maybe it should be sign, the sign, and the sign is going to be 282?
Exactly the same as it is currently on the building, yes. There, the existing store, the Dick's Sporting Goods, the letters that are on that, that building are the same letters in size that we're going to take off of that building when the building is demolished, and move it to the new building.
So there's nothing different?
There's no difference in the square footage that we enjoy today, as opposed to what we will have when the new building is opened.
All right, thank you.
You are very welcome.
Mr. Grody?
Ms. Lecount, you said this project has already been approved for them to begin working on it?
Yes, sir, they are working on it now.
Because I rode past there this evening, and this afternoon, and saw that the whole front has been opened up.
We, staff requested that they do their signage separately, because we knew they were going to need a modification for it, because it is a large sign, and it's an FDP over this location, so they, we technically need to run through this body to say you can take your sign from the old location and put it on your new location, because it's an FDP.
But, but that wasn't required for the facade work or anything else?
Correct.
Because I didn't see any permits or anything displayed for demolition, or construction, or anything.
Those would go through Hamilton County, so you would have to check with Hamilton County with respect to their building permit process.
Out of concern to us, as a township?
Typically, the county will come to us if they have any concerns, in fact, often they will push people through zoning before they get their building permit, so they have to go through zoning. Once it goes through zoning, it's the county's responsibility to make sure that everything's done properly on that end.
Sir, when is your expected completion?
Right now, I think we're looking at late spring to early summer. I don't have the exact date, so I'm just pulling it off the top of my head. I drove by the site today also, and noticed that they, you know, removed, removed it down to the bare steel, so they're, hopefully they, they don't get hung up with weather, and they can keep on schedule, but I think it's looking at early to midsummer, before they open up.
To your knowledge, with approval of this this evening, is someone going to come back to us requesting signage on the west side of the building facing Colrain Avenue?
No, I have the lease exhibits that were approved by the, with Dick's and the landlord, and the lease exhibits depict only the front set of signs reading Dick's Sporting Goods, there's no other signs on that building. As I stand right here, right now, I can say, no, they won't be coming back. And if they do, well, then it would be a separate issue to be dealt with in front of the commission.
Okay, I understand. Sorry, is Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Ferring?
I have to mention most of the questions, and I have a little concern with, you know, how big we are getting, some of them, I think are, pretend ones to make something sound smaller, you know, in the last few years on Colrain Avenue, but I feel that hurts some of the businesses too, where they can't advertise what they have there. And if that's a sign, that's exactly what you had on the existing building.
That's correct, and the, the face of, the facade now that's been approved, brings it 100% into 2016 prototypical, so it becomes very identifiable with Dick's sponsorships that you see on TV, the golf sponsorships and other things that they do, and their advertising, it's what you see. So it's very beneficial to, for Dick's to have, you know, those letters.
You said this new sign is lit up with, you know, LED lighting?
Yes, sir, yeah.
How about the old sign?
I don't know, I honestly don't know, it's probably lit with T-12 fluorescent bulbs.
In the letters themselves?
In the letters themselves, which are probably about 14 amps worth of power, where the LEDs are down to around four, so it's, and, and the LED is actually about 20% less bright, but to the, to your eye, it looks about the same, you can't tell the difference unless you're in a black room with them side by side, but they're so much more energy efficient, and they last forever, they're great.
Mr. Lauf?
My only comment is, my eye looks proportional to the size of the building and the length of the front.
Yeah, Mr. Gianni, I think Mr. Ferring kind of alluded, we're trying to move away from big signs and then get smaller signs, but I think in this instance, you're, you're staying, you know, in the same center, and you're just moving down a couple spots, and to Mr. Lauf's point, it is proportional, and it's, it's in, in keeping with the other vendors, you know, that are, that are in there. So to me, I don't see an issue with it. If you were moving to a different spot within the township and wanted to do this, I think we'd probably unanimously say no, but, but in my mind.
So had they decided to stay with it.
This seems okay to me, but it's not up to me, so I think we've answered, or we've, we've asked the questions we need to.
I got a question for the staff. Is this considered to be a variance or a minor amendment, or neither of the two?
It's a minor amendment, because this is an approved FDP, so we are amending the FDP, because the signage is on the original FDP.
Was there a mention somewhere in our literature concerning a variance on this project?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve this minor modification as, as presented and as advised by staff.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lauf?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing on case ZA 2016-01, a text amendment to add language regarding waste receptacles. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a text amendment to section 12.5.2 of the Colrain Township zoning resolution to allow for the placement of waste receptacles, 32 gallons or larger, in the front driveway, if stored against the house. Placement like this is currently prohibited. This amendment was initiated by this Colrain Township Zoning Commission on December 15th, 2015, and the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission heard this case on February 4th, 2016, and did recommend approval. My presentation is actually relatively brief this evening, you have seen this before. The text in front of you tonight is to add about a half a sentence here to section 12.5.2, so that it reads as such, "Waste receptacles that are 32 gallons or larger in size shall only be permitted in the side or rear yards, or in the front driveway if stored against the house." Staff feels that with the Regional Planning Commission's approval and a five to two vote, the fact that this was initiated by this body, and given the concerns expressed about the moving and storage of these larger cans that will come with the new agreement with Rumkey, we do recommend approval of this text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any members from the public who would like to speak about this proposed text I see none. See, we will, do I need a motion to close public hearing? Okay, can I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have any comments or?
Not at this minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Grody?
None.
Mr. Ferring?
Mr. Lauf?
Nor do I, I think that, given the, the agreement that we've entered into as a township with Rumkey, and the requirement for larger containers, it makes sense, so I'm okay with it, Mrs. Smith?
I do have a question that she was going to answer for me last time, and it pertained to people that have small houses, not having space for the larger sized can and recycling bin, has that been addressed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat what your question was?
The question or comment is that people with smaller houses may not have space for the larger can and the recycling bin, or whatever they're going to give to us. How do we handle that?
This text amendment will actually allow more opportunity for that to be stored, so you're, you can still store these in the same location as before, in the rear or side yard, but now there's actually the option to actually store these in front of the home as well, on, on the driveway, if they're up against the house. So I'm not real sure what kind of response you might be looking for with respect to some of those, some properties that ha, might have less space to do so, aside from the fact that this is going to provide more space for that storage, more opportunities for that storage.
I don't see how you can provide more space when your house is, you've got a small house, which I do, and I don't, I don't have, barely have space for the one I got now, it's going to get larger, correct?
You, you're not required to get the larger container from Rumkey.
You're not?
No, you can use your existing container if you'd like to, and in fact, you can save a couple bucks a month by using your own container.
How about the recycling bin?
There's, there's a large cart, and there's also a smaller, I think, tote, yeah, there you go, that's kind of like those red ones you see today, those are the two options for recycling.
And you have.
From my understanding. I don't know, I don't think you have to recycle.
Okay.
The, the idea is to help encourage recycling, but you're not required to.
All right, well, that takes care of my.
Now, I can tell you this, because I personally called Rumkey. If you want to keep your own garbage container and not theirs, you need to call them and get that on your account.
Okay.
Otherwise, they will be dropping off a larger container to you.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Can I have a motion to approve the text amendment, case ZA 2016-01, regarding waste receptacles?
So moved.
I have a second. Thank you, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lauf?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're cruising right through this tonight. It's a good way for me to start. Informal concept review, we have none. Going down the agenda, old business, appears to be none. New business, we have an initiation for text amendment on signage. Ms. Lecount?
In your packets, you received a memo, and this does lay out some proposed language. This is a, a possible text amendment that the Board of Zoning Appeals would actually, has actually requested that you initiate through the text amendment process. I'm hoping that you had a chance to review this language in here. I don't have an official presentation on it, but essentially, there were a handful of cases that came through the BZA, several in a row, with respect to signage and the location on a, a face of a building that is not facing directly to a right-of-way. So this is their attempt to correct that, correct what they consider to be a problem in the zoning resolution, because they, they seem to kind of just be granting variance after variance for these types of things. So that is what you have in front of you. The reason that the language looks a little lengthier than I think any of us really wanted to see is because they did want to articulate that this additional sign would be allowed at that ratio of a half a square foot, rather than at a full square foot, as per the rest of this section. One thing to note is that if you look closely at the zoning resolution, I believe it's section 15.8.2, looks very similar to 15.8.3. The BZA was a little more strategic with this, and wanted it specifically in this section, so that it's, it's identified for B2, B3, I1, so on and so forth, rather than those sections which are identified specifically in 15.8.2.
Okay.
Forgive me, I don't have those in front of me, what those are, but.
So did, did the BZA actually write this, or did they at least review this version, and it, and gives them comfort that it will help alleviate a lot of the same cases that they're seeing?
They did review this, I believe, we went back to them with two different drafts, so we kind of, they had requested this, we started out with some language just to get the ball rolling, they have edited this language, I believe it's twice, before they chose to ask you to initiate this, because you know the BZA cannot initiate a text amendment.
But they seem to be good with this version of it.
Yes, at this point, but keep in mind, it has not been reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission, they tend to have some very good recommendations for how to kind of tweak some language sometimes, so if you choose to initiate this, it would be reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission before coming to you again for discussion with their comments as well.
Do we need a vote to initiate this, or?
I believe we.
You can make a motion.
You can make a motion.
Okay.
Apparently.
Mr. Ferring, do you have any questions or comments about this?
I guess this is really the address area, it's like Stone Creek, I think, or we have a building in fact there.
Those, areas like Stone Creek, that's a planned district, so it would not be addressed in that, because the, the signage should be addressed in that overall plan, that comes about the FDP, as that's brought through. This would be to address some of our other areas where we have, some of our older, tend to be older areas, where we have outlots, or even strip centers, that actually have a face of the building that will face a main entryway, so it acts as if it's a roadway, but it's actually an entryway into the center, and some of the buildings don't always face, or entrances don't always face that vehicular entry into the, into the shopping center. So that's what this would address. It would also, we discussed this, that the zoning administrator would still have the ability to, if there's a question about whether or not we consider it a main thoroughfare, or anything like, or a main entryway, the staff could still push this to the BZA for their consideration, for a variance, if staff is not comfortable signing off on it.
Following up on Mr. Ferring's comment and question, could you give us an example of what you're talking about?
So think of, do you know, do you know where the AT&amp;T store is near, near Cross County, just south of Cross County?
What, I'm sorry, what's?
The AT&amp;T store, it's south of Cross County, what else, Staples is in there, it's the Walmart location.
I was actually thinking of that, yeah.
It sits out there, and it sits on that main entryway. Their store entrance faces inside.
Towards Walmart.
Towards Walmart. So they are, they automatically get signage on the Colrain side of that building, but they did not get signage on the south side of that building, which is where that main entryway is, because that is not a right-of-way. So they have to come in for a variance to get that additional signage on essentially that third side of the building there.
Right.
So that's what, that's what this would cover.
This would address that.
This would.
This seems to me to be the same principle as we applied for the bank that's going to, for Ulta there, right?
I was not, I'm not familiar with the variances, and then what came through that.
We gave one more sign, just because it made sense, when you look at the entrance, Colrain.
And that's during, that's, that's in an FDP.
That was in an FDP, but my point is, when we were faced with that decision, it made sense to us to say, go ahead and have the, the extra sign on the third side of the building.
Which is what the BZA is seeing.
Sort of what, this is now saying, you can do that even in non-planned districts.
So would the whole area where Dick's is, that we discussed earlier this evening, would that be another example?
No, sir, because that is a planned district.
Okay.
And that is not one of the, I'm sorry, yes, that is one of the.
But you wouldn't, because it's the FDP.
Because the FDP covers.
It wouldn't be a variance, you'd have to come in for a modification of the FDP, as opposed to.
Right, so like, like Ms. Lecount said, this mainly applies to older developments that weren't done as planned developments, and have signage restrictions and.
That's why I was asking that question, if they were going to come back at some point, they ask for signage on that west side of the building which faces Colrain Avenue.
But it's not immediately adjacent, so that's, you got to be kind of careful there, it's not immediately on Colrain Avenue, there's actually an outlaw in front of it, so they would have, and again, that would be a modification of the FDP.
Okay.
Anybody else? I'd be inclined to go ahead and make a motion that, that we initiate this text amendment and. and have it moved forward in the process. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lough?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Moving down the agenda, administration, anything for us? Any announcements up here?
I have another question about the agenda. Who, who, who determines the agenda? Is that agenda made up by people that come in and bring stuff that they want an answer to? Is it initiated by us? Because in several of the correspondence that I read, it stated that the zoning commission initiated probably the signage and the one before that, and I don't recall doing that.
This zoning commission did initiate the waste receptacles in December. As far as the, the new business, the text amendment for the signage, it's the Board of Zoning Appeals that requested that you initiated, which this body just did now. So the next time you see this, which will be in April, I believe, I'll have to look at the calendar, but I believe this will go in front of Regional Planning Commission in April, meaning it'll be back here in April. So when you see this in April, you, this body will have initiated it as of today's date.
See, because in the past, I just can't recall that wordage of us initiating. Anything is usually brought to us for us to vote on or discuss?
Zoning amendments typically are initiated by us, sometimes at the request of staff at the request of trustees, somebody saying, hey, your zoning code isn't working as well as it might, and then it's up to us to say, we'd like to make the change.
The Board of Zoning Appeals cannot initiate a text amendment. The zoning commission can, however. So the Board of Zoning Appeals is requesting that this body initiate this for them so that it can go through the review process. So all we're doing here is this kind of preliminary discussion to understand why we're, why they want this request. You've now initiated it, so you will have an opportunity, and again, I think it's April, your April meeting, to then actually go through whether or not, there'll be a public hearing and whether or not you actually want to move forward with a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to adopt this text amendment or some version.
By then, we will have in hand the review by the Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, we will.
They may suggest changes to.
Correct.
They may say it's a terrible idea or a fine idea or just like.
Correct.
If you want anything else.
But I think also, Mrs. Smith, I think text amendment proposals come through all various sorts of manners. I think like Mr. Lough was talking about, the trustees might have, and there's, might be case law with respect to different resolutions that are at play that are brought to attention to staff for their view and their decision as whether or not to move forward, to put it in your hands to determine whether or not to further initiate a, a more comprehensive discussion or, or actual proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you for the response.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, and can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll second it.
So moved? Everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.